Here on public business.
Okay, let's see, we are live streaming, so I will call to order. This regular monthly meeting of the village of Truanceburg Board of Trustees, we have any changes to the agenda?
Uh, yeah, I have an addition. Uh, let's call it energy management to discuss uh under new business.
Anything else?
Right, yes, that under my report, uh, my report or the businesses, but.
No other changes, we'll move to item three, which is our consent agenda, we have. Our monthly abstract, uh, general fund abstract totaling four hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. EMS billing abstract totaling thirty-four thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars, eighty-one cents. Water fund totaling forty-eight thousand, one hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety cents. Sewer fund totaling thirty-three thousand, three hundred twelve dollars and twenty-nine cents. And the trust and agency abstract totaling thirty-three thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. Uh, as well, we have our meeting minutes from our November twelfth meeting. And so I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
We have a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, or need to remove any items from the consent agenda? Hearing none and all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number four is our first public comment period. Any members of the public would like to comment? Yes, Kate?
Hi, I'm sorry, I can't be there in person, uh, obviously, it's hard with been there in the room. Um, I wanted just to update you guys on some things that are happening at the EMC that do actually affect Truanceburg. And that is the fact that the EMC um has rewritten our bylaws, which has been a long time coming, and we're very happy to finally have them have been approved. Um, by the county legislature, they go into effect January first. But in that rewrite, to align ourselves, the EMC with uh county's desire for how to count quorum. We've had to change how seats are designated out. Um, and what we in in that change, villages no longer have a specific representative seat on the EMC. We are encapsulating um that by the town, so all the towns who normally have a conservation advisory board or conservation group. Will still uh maintain an actual representative seat. So the village will be covered by the fact that you guys are, we are in Ulysses and we have the Ulysses um sustainability and conservation advisory uh council. And so if there are things that are specific to Truanceburg, that would be the organization, um, and so the representative is Chris Collins, and she's the Ulysses representative. Um, uh, to the EMC, uh, I am still gonna be there um on the EMC and I'm still on the Ulysses C S A C. So I will still be talking about Truanceburg and bringing things to you um as they come up. Um, but I wanted you guys to know why it had changed and uh that there will no longer be an official village seat on the EMC. And I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
And you will, first of all, thank you for letting us know because that has not been communicated to us from the county.
And maybe I should have done that a little sooner, but I suddenly realized that, oh, right, this is all finally happening.
Can you provide any color as to any conversations that went into this change?
Yeah, um, part the, so it was around quorum and the county needed quorum to be actually fifty percent of seated members. And the EMC currently works with a flexible kind of number of members, and we are having trouble filling seats is really a a big piece of it. Um, getting people to volunteer for an advisory board is really hard. Um, and so when we looked at the essentially the edict from the state as what created EMCs and the county charter, um. The public communication part had to stay, and so that we did feel that we wanted representatives from each municipality and the municipalities, we decided. And also we, um, they were often supposed to have a representative on a conservation group. And none of the villages in Tompkins County have their own conservation group, most of them are encapsulated in their towns, conservation um group. And so that looked like an easy one to kind of say, okay, they're still getting represented on this council. Through their, through the town and um that will help us align with what we need to reduce our number of actual seats. So we came down from, I think we had almost twenty-eight seats and now we're down to um twenty-one seats in total. And that includes the municipal seats from all of the towns, the city of Ithaca, and then a number of at-large seats. Um, so I am actually staying on as an at-large member.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Kate? All right, well, thanks again for letting me know.
Letting you know that, um, but certainly the, and I I would urge the village to use the Ulysses C S A C. Oh, I mean, a lot, I only came a couple of times, maybe once every couple of years uh to the village board. So I really would urge the village to work with C S A C um and I'm on it. Uh, you know, Mary Bouchard is there, there are a couple of village folks, um, Marissa Nolan's on it, so you've got a lot of village people who are on that. Um, board who can be doing work for the village, we're just not currently yet um because of disit structure. So I know we've talked about in the past, really getting a more official uh grouping with the with the town. And so I really think that would be a a benefit, um, as you know, moving forward for the town and the village, both of us. So I really urge you guys to look at that, too, and I'm happy to bring it up to the C S A C if that is something that is of interest to the to the village.
Great. Much appreciated, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Hmm, let's see, seeing the other members of the public, unless you guys are here for yourselves present, we'll move on to reports of representatives, and I see Anne Gorman is with us.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, I'll just uh comment a little bit uh in addition to what Kate said as far as the county's point of view. Uh, why we we changed uh the structure for the advisory boards? We have, I don't know how many boards we have, tens of ten, twenty, thirty advisory boards. And um so we wanted to uh provide some framework that they could all fit in. Because it was really hard for our staff to figure out, do we have vacancies? Are those vacancies important for meeting quorum? Um, and uh lots of other things, and then uh, so that we left it, we we, one of the things we asked was for the boards that did have a flexible number. Is for them just to come up with a number. The and uh so then it was much easier to track if they said fifteen or seventeen or twenty-one members, then we know. It's easier uh because our staff often helps and they do with EMC, uh, so the staff has to figure out, yes, you have quorum, no, you don't. And then uh so it makes it much, much easier on on our end to have um, and we also uh to have some type of uh more structure, what what we think is more structure uh across the board, and we did, we did some other things with bylaws. So we thank EMC for uh for for doing that, it was up to each board to how they wanted to do that, if they still wanted to have assigned seats for different things. Um, I know it was a change, but we're trying to streamline it as best we can and the bylaws. So some updates that I, other updates that I have here, we'll start with uh sales tax, which unfortunately was down again. Let's see, the county as a whole, and this is for October. Was down uh two, let's see, month over month was down point seven one percent from last October. Year over year, down uh six point nine three percent. Municipalities on average were down two point two five percent. Uh, month over month and year over year, two point zero eight percent. Whoops, I just lost my other thing here, hold on. All right, um. Trying to find my notes. Okay, here we go, uh, so I, I can't remember if we passed this since the last time, but uh I talked to you, but we um, we went back and forth with uh our tax levy increase. Uh, mostly down, uh, so I won't say back and forth, but we gradually got a little bit lower. So our tax levy increase for twenty twenty-five is two point seven two percent. Which is approximate rate of four point uh seven nine dollars on a one thousand, for each one thousand dollars of assessed value. And let's see, a lot of updates, we've been working really hard on sheltering issues uh for people with uh who are experiencing homelessness, we opened up the Code Blue Shelter for when it uh drops below freezing at night. And that's on the corner of Tioga and Buffalo Street, uh, the renovated bank building there. And uh, well, we we renovated it a little bit to accommodate folks, and we are getting about thirteen to fifteen people a night at that location. And for uh, that's for mostly single people, if uh if there's families that show up or request assistance, we're using uh motels because it's just not set up. To accommodate families at this time. And uh with the closure of the Saint John's Shelter, we are using right now uh hotel partners to house people. And the last thing on uh housing for or or sheltering, we um where the county legislature authorized our uh administration to purchase two twenty-seven Cherry Street. And uh and construct a one hundred bed emergency shelter, so we're going to be uh working on that. And that even is not uh, you know, an ending. Uh, so it doesn't solve the whole problem, we'd like to work with other partners in the community to build out different levels of housing that people need to help get them back into uh independent housing as much as possible. And uh, those are all the updates I have right now.
Great, any comments or questions for Andrew? Thanks, Anne, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, I was fixing the reports from this for. Isn't, the agenda is revisiting the need for a second monthly meeting, would have been scheduled the twenty-third. I will be out of town.
Also be out of town.
Yeah.
Might have something that we.
Go ahead, there's no objection, although I have a yes, but meeting on Monday, the twenty-third. Okay. Anything require?
Uh, the only thing I have is, believe it or not, we had fifty calls last month, and it was mostly storm related, but that was a lot. Um, the truck repair, uh Fulton framing came down, looked at the truck, said that they could fix it for thirty-five hundred dollars. So we're gonna go ahead, they're going to weld it, paint it, strip it, whatever they have to do to fix it. And they said it should last for a while, so um, we're gonna go ahead and do that. Um, to get that truck going so that hopefully we can trade it in and get some money for it, for the for the new vehicle. Um, and other than that, just the the Santa boxes up at the fire department and put your letters in and they can go in until the twenty-first of December.
Exactly, so I think we're gonna be thinking that simply to um acknowledge and thank everyone involved in making Winterfest the successful success, including to be fine down, uh, everyone who helped set up and organized, I was showed up on three thirty four and four, and I've seen that many people in the street for Winterfest, maybe. Certainly is, if if not the busiest, it has to be, has to be close.
Weather was nice.
Weather helps.
You thought it was cold, I thought it was great.
But again, thank, thank you there, everyone with Winterfest organizing. All right, EMS youth and street true then.
Start with EMS falls, fifteen in the town of Coburn. In one, five in Hector. Four in Interlake and seven in the city of Ithaca, four in the town of Ithaca, one in Lowdy, eight in Mecklenburg, one in Newfield, one in Romulus, twenty-eight in Truanceburg, and thirty-two in the town of Ulysses. One in. Total was one oh seven. So we are going to exceed a thousand. Same this year.
Fourteen percent.
I don't have a breakdown, I haven't have to have to separate it all out, but we're definitely close. Yeah, come end of the year, we might do a calendar, calendar, it's actually good that to see how we evolve with the calendar year. Um, there was. Yeah. It's been a wild ride this year, um, speaking of wild ride, uh, the new, I don't know what to call it, the temporary third ambulance, the permanent third ambulance, whatever, however that materializes, the sort of stopgap third ambulance. Um, is in place, uh, Joel and Tony went out to get it. Uh, they have been working more, uh, feel comfortable reporting uh to make the physical changes. Um, they've just been there all the time, I think they were up in crazy, crazy hours, uh, particularly Joel, particularly Tony. Um, but just getting that wrapped up, um. We are. Other piece is the permissive referendum, which I should have mentioned at the top, I apologize, uh, but that is in the Dropbox, although it's not on the internet. Um, we have a permission referendum, this is for the new indoors, so this is a couple of years out, but it's a process that we have to start now to get the build going. So this is back to our regular scheduled program, this is our our normal replacement schedule. This ambulance has been built out, uh, Joel put together a committee of staff to work on this, they've been building it out, maybe for for months now. Uh, I am quite pleased and quite proud of how the whole process has gone, it's been, it's been fairly cooperative. Um, in terms of just the productivity of the committee and how everything has gone. Committees are difficult in a stack of of first responders right there, you don't have working hours to work, so it means people are coming in on their off hours, it's a lot of commitment and a lot of dedication. Um, to put this together and they've also, that price is less by, I'd say, thirty or forty grand less than the last ambulance bought, which as well now is just not how things work. Um, so I think they made some really smart cuts to what was in the last ambulance. Come out and run, you know, right there, is it two thirteen?
Yeah, for the record, those keeping track at home, even with smart cuts and a reduction in price, the way it will still cost two hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars.
Yes.
Leave for Mr. Referendum is for deposit.
Correct. Yes, yep, so there's two pieces that we need to do, one is authorize Worden to sign that contract, the other is a permissive referendum to the down. Um, so the first motion I would make is to authorize Worden to sign the contract uh with Gorman Ambulance uh for our new ambulance.
So. For a second. So do you have a second, any questions, comments?
No.
One thing to note, just to emphasize that this is a couple of years out, so the build takes a very long time, it's similar to fire trucks, it's it's not quite as as involved, but it's very, very close, so it's just.
Yeah. I had a curious question. I know there's like different shapes and sizes and builds, like, how do you know enough to say a little bit of like how we think through that, or is that like maybe the next time Joel comes?
So normally I wouldn't, um, this is something we talked about a lot for this one, um, a few years ago, I had been pushing hard uh for a Sprinter van style. They are much, much cheaper. Um, and that was enough to sort of set the hook and, you know, reel me all the way in. Um. Unfortunately, they run into banks and purchased a few of them, and everything that we've heard is that they don't weather well and age well, so they end up being more expensive in the long term. They also really reduce the ability to provide care in the flow in ambulance, just because they're very, very thin, they're very small. Um, so there isn't really grave for to have a provider sitting there um with the patient while they're being transported, so that's really a downside. Uh, there is also, so what we traditionally use and what this one is, is um a van body and frame with sort of the box on the back. You can also do a truck body and frame with the box on the back, those are the three types, it's the Sprinter van and truck. Um, the van version is really just practically, it's shorter, the wheelbase is shorter because you have sort of a stubby your nose, and you have full access between the the box, the back, the patient carrier, and the cab. The truck separates the two, right, because the the box moves independent of the cab. Um, like a traditional truck, it also has, you know, eight or ten feet of cab on the front, so it makes maneuvering much more difficult. Um, we were oscillating between two, those are a little bit cheaper, but it really is. Um. I think in a world where we had four or five, we might have a Sprinter that was, right, that we would use instead of our fly car, our fly car kind of takes that place, but we might try and test that. At this point, it's just with just really one and sometimes two ambulances working at a time. Stakes are just too high to experiment with the Sprinter because of just everything we know as far as maintenance uh and their lack of usability. I still think long term, that's kind of the direction you want to go, but it is, um, it's a difficult pitch to make to the people who are using them. Day to day, it's just much more difficult to fit, and then if it's in the shop all the time, you only have, you know, it just becomes just sort of night and edge. Uh, I hope as we have more and we have more of sort of rotation, right, and we can get there, but that's a long, long.
I'll take fewer ambulances overall as a first option.
Yeah, um, yeah, and they're not a lot cheaper when you have to have two, you know.
All right, the motion before us is to authorize me to sign the contract of Gorman Road to see vehicles for the purchase of a new ambulance, and any comments or questions? Say aye.
Aye.
Then, the next I would move.
So the next piece is a permissive referendum for the down payment, which basically finalizes, seals this contract, um, so I would move that we approve twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars from the EMS vehicle reserve for the down payment on this subject to the permissive referendum.
Second.
Second.
Any comments or questions for that? Back in the living room. Let's try to agree this for the delivery.
Oh, yes, yep.
You can see the contract says approximately three hundred and five minutes longer. I feel we'll make sure to give us a heads up.
So you give, so one note on that, I said two years, that's the last one took two years, the last one was highly customized. This one, they started with the template and started customizing, right, which is why the the cost is substantially cheaper, I think that also closes the window on the build.
Well, I have told you now, they said, so so they wanted to hear, but they can give us a window, right? Do the referendum to bounce in a.
With good time, yeah, that's good.
Any other comments or questions on permissive referendum for the bounty? You're in a, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, so the only other thing I would note in my report, on the youth side, uh, youth commission um receives funding from town, village, and county, the county budget. It looks like ass projected, so we are in good shape, it's always a little bit strange on the village side to have the way that the budgets are staggered, we're sort of at the the tail end of that with, and it looks like we are ass projected, which is good, so we shouldn't have any any surprises when we get to our budget. But that's it.
Okay, uh. DPW water sewer CPZR?
Yeah, uh, just a brief update on CPZR, just to keep everyone abreast of where we're at. We've worked our way through draft parking regulations for the commercial districts. Um, largely just trying to simplify that and move a little bit from, not that we have concern per se today with too much parking being built, but that is more often the concern these days than not, if you think of a Walmart or something like that, the Walmart, the parking lots are so enormous. They claim that it's for Black Friday, except everyone shops online now, and so it's not actually for Black Friday, and they're just, they become van parking lots or whatever there, so. Moving towards a place where they're not by any means extreme limits, but starting to introduce the idea of, hey, we actually don't want you to build so much. We have parking on Main Street, we have parking in other places, we can figure out parking, but if we instead of having buildings on Main Street, tear down a bunch of buildings, put a bunch of apartments, that's not the direction we want to go as a village, so. Uh, a little bit of that sorted out, and now we're moving on to signage. Um, by and large, I think I maybe mentioned this last time, guy seems to think that it's mostly in good shape, Tom only has a couple of notes, so I think it's not a big shift. We are trying to talk a little bit about brightness of nighttime signs and um, looking at Main Street, you know, out during Winterfest, it's actually quite nice, in fact. If anything, it's maybe too dark, like some of the, some of the buildings have zero lighting, the bookstore in particular comes to mind. So we again, luckily, we do not have that problem, but also wanting to make sure that, you know, no one comes in with just a blaring, bright, gaudy side. Um, so we're gonna think through a little bit of that, because we don't currently have anything around that in the in the law. Um, but that'll get us pretty close to the end of commercial zoning, there's a little bit we need to look at with usage that's allowed in the zone, but at that point, I think I'm I'm contemplating coming back to the board with an early draft just for us to kind of review, and if there's any early comments. Um, I think we'd like to probably push forward with the industrial zone as well, which I think will hopefully move a little more quickly now that we've done commercial, like, there's a lot of overlap there, before we go through the full rigmarole of you know, uh, review and a law passing and the public hearings and all that kind of jazz, but getting towards the end of commercial feels like a nice little checkpoint for this board to take a look and give some feedback and that sort of thing, so keep an eye for that in the beginning of the year, early spring, maybe. Um, we'll see where that goes. Um, and then on the DPW water sewer side, um. We also have a permissive referendum to talk about, uh, I'll kick it off, and if you guys want to say anything, feel free to, but. To talk about, uh, I'll kick it off, and if you guys want to say anything, feel free to, but. This is a permissive referendum, so I'll move that we uh allocate up to ten thousand dollars from the DPW building reserve to extend the roof cover to the DPW shop subject to permissive referendum. I'll give my version of it. Let me know if it's wrong or not, but basically the idea is to extend the roof off the side of the shop, create an overhang. To park more equipment and materials underneath to just give it some protection. Um, not. Maybe it get maybe eventually gets built into something more than that, but the idea is mostly to get some of the equipment that we can't probably put in any of the barns. We have a few too many things going on. Keep them out of the snow, keep them a little covered just from the overhang there. Um, and help extend the the life of those. Those that be so quick. So I don't know if there's anything else to add.
Specifically, we want to keep our trailer under for the winter, so when we have a load of the X area, you know, a nice day. Um, so we're ready to go for. Hard breaks. Those sort of digging activities, uh, but we have lack of coverage. A few pieces of equipment, so. That's a very, that's an awful option to keep things under the roof. They said the life of stuff, so. Like everybody else. Outcoming plans.
Yeah, I know we keep talking about fire, new fire EMS building and does DPW take over the fire department? So there's a lot of moving pieces and we didn't want to. Overbuild or try and build some net new large building or something like that. Uh, so this felt like a good middle ground with, you know, we've got the money in the reserve. It's not terribly expensive. Then can do a lot of the um thinking and building in-house, so we can do a lot with a little here. Uh, and even do something in the meantime that doesn't break the bank.
Well, we have a motion for us appropriate ten thousand dollars. Questions in all the favor, please say aye.
I'm sorry, I missed the second. Who's seconded?
I did.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's all I've got.
I will start with. Chief Nelson's report. So um this or in November, we had two hundred and eighty-four calls for service. Uh, within the village responding to one call for service outside the village within Ulysses. Um, there were a hundred and fifty-four property checks and residential checks. Some criminal investigations, uh verbal dispute, domestic dispute. Trespassing and. Three. Uh, motor vehicle crash investigations. Twenty-three traffic tickets and thirty-six parking complaints or problems. I don't have a lot. Um. A few months ago, we talked about um perhaps looking at. Um, changing the police department's office in some way where it is a little bit more functional. Um, in that area. Chief Nelson did some planning, which I sent a drawing to trustees of. Something that he was looking at doing. Um, I would like to look at exploring the option of perhaps. At least renovating the first floor of the police department. Um, giving some more privacy to our. Uh admin and then also giving some privacy to people that come that may come in um and have more. Uh, more com- comfortable com- comfortable conversation with. With our police officers. Um, also, there are some security issues that uh need to be addressed. So I really don't know. I. I think what he's looking at is definitely more than what we would be looking at for this year, and I would like to look at what it would cost to make those changes. To budget in the future. And. Yeah, so that's that's pretty much it for that. Um, so I don't really know what the next steps would be to actually do that, come up with a true plan and then see how much it would cost.
Much to. Really, why we did this.
Okay.
There. Push through. It certainly have them. It's. I'll assess the. The other option would be. It's all still in this.
Okay.
I think it's M R B is R and P very firm, this network that's probably.
Okay.
I think it's worth starting up. At least have a sketch. Do something quicker. I mean, not that anything is quick.
Okay. So what do I need to do for the like in a public session to start that conversation?
It just came this evening.
I think now. Preliminary plans. Probably won't take very much time.
Yeah, I think um. What Chief Nelson is looking to do is. Moving the main entrance um so that there really is only one entrance. For this particular side of our village building. Um, and then. Closing off the current entrance. Um, is probably. One major change and then making our bathroom uh handicap handicap compliant. Um, which is currently not. We don't have a facility actually in this building. I think those are the major changes and then perhaps moving, I think it's one wall over. Um, to give more privacy for that administrator. All the way on the other side. Basically, where Chief Nelson's offices now would turn into the admin's. Uh, office with a window. Um, for people to approach the window instead of having an open area come straight towards that administrator.
Has you know if Chiefs talked to Tom about this? Because I know Tom has his list of wishes and hopes about what. Isn't quite in code or what could be improved, and I don't know that we need to. Check every box, but if we're going to go touch a bunch of things and. Specifically, we're going to put a lot more. Foot traffic through that particular gateway that's already kind of iffy. Um, we just don't want to think about what. If anything, we should improve there along with whatever changes are going on.
Yeah, we can definitely forward it to Tom. We'll um get some. Notes from him.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's probably a little gray area that like entryway back in there because it's probably not something we have to touch, but. I know it's got just like plate glass window in there that Tom always has. Understandable questions about. We're going to put a lot more foot traffic there depending on. It's been, I don't know. I don't know what folks to. Sort of, I don't know what who comes in through for for the police, but I. Suspect at times there are people who are. Not totally in their faculties and having that sort of glass, it might be problematic, so that it's just like that kind of thing.
I agree. I mean, we did have that in one instance recently, so.
Yeah.
So I will add as another uh office resident that preliminary collaborative conversations happened with at least chief, because certainly the flow is the main entrance to be the. ADA compliant entrance that affects traffic past our office through our window and. Um, Tom got sort of. A little bit checked in with, but not full details because and as you mentioned, ADA compliance of that area is his primary. Um, concern. So so that feels good. Anyway, it's not an isolated concept. It's it includes all of us so far.
We can't give a mission out.
Yeah, so it's great.
Anything else on that piece?
Um, without more time to think about it, I do feel like the. The idea of privacy for. Interviews with public, whatever form that takes should be a priority. I haven't really had time to look at, I mean, that would certainly be. I already mine. I'm also a little sensitive to the idea of sharing. An entryway. Um, police department and public access. But without looking at the plans, I think it's hard. It's hard to really make an evaluation, but I suppose if Jess is less sensitive to that than I am, I would defer to you. That's not a huge priority. It's just something that sort of pops up in my mind as as something to be.
I agree, and it was a it was a concern for our office too, and the plans, the preliminary plans address that. I'm sure the M R B plans would address it too, and frankly, because that is a. Kind of a clear, if you don't know where you're going and you see a ramp from municipal municipal lot, people often come up there and come to me to. Talk to see where the police station is. Not not all of them, certainly, but so, yeah. Thank you for thinking that.
Alright, um, great. So I will send it on M R B. Okay. Um, anything else? I think that was pretty much our discussion. Winterfest. Um, we did not get to talk about, but we did in general talk about um open container laws for celebrations that we do within the village. So I did ask Jess to put a reminder on our Winterfest. Um, on her announcement, uh, on Friday before Winterfest. But that is in effect, even though there are barriers. Um, he said that there was a huge. Issue during, it was something uh during Porch Fest that became an issue um where people were blatantly. With open containers on the streets. Um, which he, of course, does not appreciate. Um, and so he just doesn't want it to be a reoccurring issue, so it is something that we should probably. Um, make sure that we address in signage for any of our. Village events. Um, and that's pretty much it. Do we have an application for an open open container permit during specific? Events? No.
Right. But they can't take off and like go down Main Street with their beer.
We do allow meters during events. At. Farmer's Park area. Right. So in that context, the farmer's market, we consider private, even though it's. I guess that's one of the reasons.
It's more contained, maybe?
The exceptions in the law are official functions of the village on village property, which I think probably also maybe covers that to some degree. And then special events with a special event permit. So. That I don't know where that falls with off with Winterfest specifically. I haven't thought more about it than looking at it for thirty-two seconds just now, so.
That does feel worth investigating now because. It's like we're in a very gray area on both Porch Fest and Winterfest. We might want to clarify that one way or the other. In a more.
It does say like in there, you have to specifically designate where they are and. Who will be dispensing and things like that. So I don't. Maybe that's more than probably. People want to get into for Winterfest at least.
There are currently no temporary alcohol vendors at Winterfest or at Porch Fest. So they're just the regular places and your lawns.
But not a grave.
Yeah, not a grave, and we do post and comment about open container. Law is on the Porch Fest, which is in the village website. It's on their website permanently. We'll make sure we add it to the newsletter like we did for Winterfest, so. Not saying we shouldn't change it and be on Burdo Street, but that's where we are right now.
So all the conversation, I I would be open to reevaluating. Parts of different pieces of this, but. As it stands today, something that's like that, like clarity.
Yes, so I um just yesterday, I believe, or maybe it was today, emailed the reconciliation of the general fund for November. Um, I will work on water and sewer um and send out invites. Um, to the department heads so that we can do our prep meeting before they meet with you all as commissioners, fire and EMS. Um, you're already done, but I'll make sure I'll connect with um Matt and Joel and see if now we're sort of at a six-month review. Do you notice any? Concerns? Do I notice any concerns?
The reconciliation is definitely helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, and so and so I'll see if he wants to, um, if they want to connect. Um. So then I said it last time and I'll say it again, and we'll have to see you again until January, but consider when you are going to meet with your um team in January to get your. Your ducks in a row for being able to present to the board. Which is something we'll look at in January, February, February. I can't remember now when you start to talk about it here. February, right? End of February. Okay, so that can feel. Done and dusted by the end of March. At the latest for April adoption. Uh, great. Um, so we've got water reeds starting and then water bills will go out the first week of January. Um, of course, the village offices will be closed on uh Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve and New Year's Day. So water bills go second. I intend to have a code speed side-by-side analysis of the eighteen identified municipalities for January. We have all the data collected thanks to uh Jess Weber, Deputy Clerk. Um, but it's not compiled. That's a little bit. Some effort. Um, and then the, let's see. Uh, Winterfest from the E T C committee standpoint uh went really well and was sort of, it ended up being a collaborative effort between uh two, a director and then. Cynthia Manino, who had been prior director, realizing she had more time and stepping back in attendance was. Um, the same, if not a little bit more for sure, uh which is a great increase um. Since we've been doing it and it didn't drop off after that one fiftieth celebration here, which is which is really the thing to celebrate, I think. Um, and no parking tickets given out during Winterfest is what I heard. Um, so that's it. Does anyone have any? Questions about things, clerk treasurer? Okay.
Actually, I have one quick thing to add to my report. Those of us who've been here for a little while remember the process of C O Ns, so certificate of need for EMS agencies that has to pick goes by municipality or EMS district. So in the case of Mackinac, they're. Sort of parcel pieces of the town factor. Each requires its own C O N. Um, Joel has been working on those for the last couple of months. Historically, they have been very trying. Um historically, they have been very trying, they've been very difficult. Joel made the process look exceptionally easy. It went very smooth. They're all filed. Everything is is moving along. Um I haven't really noted it. Normally, I would be talking about this for like six months in advance and it would be a whole process, um. But it's gone very smoothly, very quickly. Hector was gonna do their own, their Macklinburg is municipal CLA. Just sort of a different process, but in the end Joel took on all of the work, in fact, helped mention all of the work, obviously, that's. Uh but took the lead on all of those and with help from the various municipal um offices. Filed them, we are ready and able to continue operating. Uh so I was very pleased, just wanted to. You know. Give. Give Joel his 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 flowers for that. It was it was quite endless. Um that despite the uh all the work of new land and all those things, so just a quick note.
Just for Jess, um since you have background in the how the festivals and stuff work in town, could you, for the public? Break down how the financials are for, like, where does the money come to sponsor? Winterfest?
Yeah, um winterfest fest is one hundred percent donor sponsored except for five hundred dollars that that um comes out of the events and tourism committee budget line. And that budget total, which is five thousand for the whole year, um so five hundred goes to winterfest. Everything else is donations.
Okay.
The same is not exactly true, but porch fest is also uh.
Very much like that.
It's all donations and some from the village ETC budget line to cover the main stage performance that happens at the end.
Okay, so for the people that hit me up at Garrett's. Saying that for the village taxes that they pay, that tree should have looked like Rockefeller Center. We do not pay for that tree. The village does not.
Like they have extra in their pocket, they could donate to the winterfest.
And we could put more lights on the tree, right?
As for the record, I personally would encourage them to do that.
Yes, exactly.
These guys would love to put up a thirty foot tree.
I'd like get a group together to do that.
A lot of big discussion on the tree and I have thoughts on how to do that differently, more bigger and better.
Table that. Their plans afoot. Exciting.
They're exciting plans afoot for the tree.
Yes.
Serious shameless flood. There are a couple of dozen. Couple of dozen businesses on the front of that flyer.
Yes.
Plenty of money.
Yes.
I just have one question about that certificate of need. How often do you have to? Does that have to be renewed renewed?
To be honest with you, I don't know. There's generally a recertification that's fairly quick, and then there's more involved pieces that cycle through, so we don't have to do them all at the same time. But it's.
But it's not like.
Because we have so many that we have received. It's basically every year that we have to do.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, that would be a Joel question, the the real specific answer.
Thank you.
So I know that there are firms who use your ones.
Yep.
They they charge a lot, a lot of money. As Joel thought anymore, kind of was come up in the past, we thought anymore about. Whether. Those should be. In the business charging for the network.
Be honest with you. It didn't come up because he was so blasé about. You, I shouldn't say blasé, he was uh. The workload, I think, relative to. His capacity was manageable in a way that it was not historically been, so it was a new experience and to me, honestly, he told me about it and I was just a little bit. Like I didn't know how to react, right? It was so different uh than my experience of those has been. That I don't know. So that didn't come up, but it is an interesting question because he clearly has the skills. I will say that a lot of it is because his systems for data collection are so robust. That a lot of it at a certain point becomes blood and play, right? Like he just has the that data on and in a very accessible way. Which is not historically the case and wouldn't be the case if we were to shop that.
So, yeah, so. Maybe I'm. I would like to give. Even if you have a shop. I would like to know what that cost. For Hector, if they have.
They had to go.
Not that's just to give him charges, but they should be well aware of the value of that.
I think that's fair.
And after you include the seizure. It's been twenty five thousand dollars.
Right, I'm okay with that. But they should, no, I I agree. And yeah, we've talked about that. And it hasn't come up with your Joel, but I. It is an interesting question. One thing I should note is in executive session, we'll talk about a potential hire. Uh but that position is the uh. EMS clerk responder hybrid position. Once that's built, we'll have a lot more capacity to do that outreach, those sort of. Playable duties and that would be a good use of that person's time, and if we do travel that, we could uh of shopping that out, which. I agree with you. I think the the more important piece is the data point about what the value of that.
Right.
Definitely your charge. Right.
Well, where one town. There's one town in Chautauqua County. And I had a conversation and they they were quoted fifty five thousand dollars for their initial CLA.
To stand up and bring. Initial is different. I, for some reason, twelve thousand is the number that's sticking in my head for a recertification. But I can't honestly remember if that was us tabulating our own time in doing them, or if that was something that we had got. Their party number on, but you're right, that is actually, that's an important piece. I'll. I'll talk until about that, see if he has a sense. Uh if not, if we forget, yeah.
Hey, um I remember something, this whole business, we had a couple of months ago. A request to donate a piece of. Land to the village, we ran it by a guy, didn't see it, serves with it. Uh there were a couple of emails back and forth between Jessica and attorney and all of the. Matter for the state. Um and effectively what it comes down to is.
It's only good.
So there there effectively isn't a lot for us to do. The attorney for the state indicated that he was just going to essentially. File a paper, be it over the village sheet, he didn't want to ban this street. So I think. I think when he files that. He's saying. Jesse is.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
So that's really what I think. I think it would be more required. During the process of getting things deeded over to us, in case kind of abandoned part of the street. It will fall under village. Any other items of old business? Uh new business, um the hopefully everyone's had a chance with these clients at the. Older, you know, tonight's. Uh meeting, Village Road Road dedication. There's a lot there. We encourage everyone to look through it. This will be the first time in quite some time. Years. In five years, longer. Um the village has had new roads deeded over to it. Um we had hoped. If there are questions for. Our DPDW or. INHS or their engineer, um they are present. But we had a hope that we would be able to um accept the the full dedication packet tonight. Um but as of this afternoon. Guy not completed all the legal review. I believe it was summed up because they received relatively late, it's Friday. So as you can imagine, it's not not a small process to do this. Dedication back includes the roads, but water and sewer infrastructures, there's. Fair bit of legal review there as well as. MRB is. Making sure everything meets. Specification. As previously approved. By the planning board. Six years ago?
Yeah.
Um. What I can say, um what I can say is that. We recognize, the village recognizes that the that the public improvements, meaning. All those things that will become public, with the roads and water and sewer infrastructure are physically complete. Uh and that that is important because. Yeah, folks will be in some moments over there. You have a temporary uh. CBOs, uh temporary fifty five, we see four of those buildings, so it's really just on allegations of the legal and engineering. They show all the eyes, or that teaser across before the village accepts the responsibility of the ownership of the of the infrastructure. Uh the public improvements are physically complete. Um and the legal, the the review of the legal documents. Will be debated out of wait this week. Take that up in January for for a sentence. Neither you want to have that.
Some portion of it. Walk through the rule, so. So those anywhere and then. Changes. Check out. The we had concerns about. As far as I can tell, everything's done.
Um Lynn or Dumbey, did you have anything you wanted to uh to add or ask?
Um, no, I I appreciate, it's really hard to hear you, mayor, and also whoever was just speaking, also extremely hard to hear. But um what I gather is that you are um recognizing that we're in the middle of this legal process. Should be complete shortly and you'll be able to take dedication in January, but at this time, you're acknowledging that the. Road is physically complete and the the water and sewer and whatnot is physically complete.
Yeah, I apologize. My uh my battery died on my microphone. Yeah, I'll just, I'll just, I I'll restate that I, you know, I did say that the village does recognize, in fact. That the public improvements, um all of the all of the areas and items. Uh and infrastructure that are going to be deeded over to the village, they are physically complete, even though the legal review has not been. Uncompleted yet. Uh but that we expect that the legal review will be completed. Probably. Murphy's Law being what it is. Soon as this meeting is completed, within a couple of days of it, um and we will uh. And we will. Take up the formal approval of the dedication packet in January.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Were there any other questions, comments? On the board?
I was curious, this is a little bit tangential, but when was the last step? Is it Tim Rack?
Um what about? Parkside?
Um. That's more recent.
That would have been, that would have been oh four.
Yeah, oh four. And uh March, my Tim Rack would have been the.
Yeah, ladies early nineties, so twenty years anyway. And then.
Thirty.
And then fifteenth, four thousand.
Thirty years.
Oh, twenty thousand.
Two thousand. Oh, two thousand. Said eighty ninety.
Eighty nine ninety for March on Timmer. Uh, I drive and. That of you. There are four time, right? That's fifteen year, fifteen and fifteen years and then twenty years. So we didn't video record those. There. I'm sure the minutes are in print somewhere. I'm sure they're very sparse in the front office. Type site.
Alright. Anything else on that piece? We will have that coming back to us in January. Next item of new business, we have our annual. Engagement or reengagement letter. With village council. Although he prefers that I refer to it as council for the village, since he's not a village employee. Uh costs will be going up. Us will be going up slightly, just like everything else. And so unless there are any objections or concerns. With. Our village council, I would entertain a motion to authorize me to. Sign and accept. The engagement agreement for legal services with Guy Pro of Thaler and Thaler for twenty twenty five. So.
Second.
Comments, questions? Certains. Discussion.
How often are? Is legal representation? How often does it change over or does it ever?
Guide is, well, of course, we have other external councils for different needs and purposes, but in terms of uh. Dedicated. Go to council for the village, guys. Our second attorney. In. What years is? Um twenty five, twenty six years.
Okay. Okay.
Last one retired. To be clear, you know, it was. Um it tends to be a technical expertise, right? It's hard to turn over, so it's not something we read it, but. I don't even remember the last one's attorney, which I'm, or the last one's name, which I'm embarrassed to admit.
Want to back David Tyler.
Village Council and then. I mean, so they both, Guy has known this well too. They both tend to refer certain subjects. I think the last statements.
Too bad, that too bad was.
If bow was forward to the zoning rewrite two thousand.
Oh, okay.
This was a land use expert, and that was our first zoning rewrite ever. Prior to Dave Tyler, I couldn't tell you.
But Gold or maybe?
Could be. That comes back in a minute too.
Might have been bad girl there. I was just curious.
Yeah, and I think I think it's nice to have have us firm with. Good connections elsewhere for the. Unfortunate situation. Sometimes we'll need specialized counsel. Uh so we have a motion and a second to authorize me to uh. Accept and sign the engagement letter with Thaler and Thaler for twenty twenty five. Is there any other discussion, questions or comments? Hearing none and all in favor, please say aye.
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 You pose. Okay. Um tis the season. When do we want to have our seat of the village?
We usually do it in March, right?
Uh we've always done it early in February. Well, it pushed it later.
Oh, we did this.
Typically, I'll have Saturday.
Typically, Saturday morning, nine AM at the fire hall. First of February is, first Saturday in February is the first.
That would not be great for me.
Following Saturday would not be awesome.
Fifteenth.
Valentine's weekend.
How sweet it is.
Yes. And this is how we end up in March.
Probably how we ended up.
When it's President's Day and school breaks at the.
Well, the fif- what the fifteenth is a bad idea.
That's Valentine's weekend, and it is the start of that school break, so. Will be a lot of people, they might.
People will be away.
Which means twenty second, they get back.
And what did we glaze over March eighth or February?
Uh February eighth is not great for me.
Okay. Okay.
Purely for himself, which perspective, I have someone turning fifteen in the house. Village party.
And he can get bagels and fruit for breakfast.
I mean, if the, if the eighth works for everyone.
No, no, that's okay.
Actually. I don't see, March seems like a good practice to start, right? I mean, we'll have our first budget meeting and we'll have a little bit of sense of the shape of that. I don't see, like, it's a little bit of a mess for us, I think personally, logistically, to fit in. Budget meeting, budget meeting, big public meeting, public budget, you know, like, that's a lot, but that doesn't really change. I think Martin, I I like the idea of having a little bit of the idea of what our budget is looking like. To me, that that suits me fine.
Due to March fifteenth, the eyes march. What's the first Saturday in March, March? First Saturday is the first. Is the first. It works for me.
The new assistance.
I don't know. Yeah, new assistance.
Somewhere that I feel like we've talked about it, maybe you had, maybe there's preliminary or.
I feel like it's always a little gray to be.
Oh, right, I should know that. It's because then there's grievance day and all that kind of stuff. Right, let me, let me, let me.
Alright, do we want to tend to, we schedule for March one? Yes, I like it.
March one.
Chess and Jasmine. Design most cards to all the usual.
Yeah. Okay.
One thing we have at times discussed is making it more accessible to families of kids. Helping out in some way on the kid front, you know, that's also. Proving difficult at times for us to get like a. Actual accredited babysitting sort of assumption, something that would actually work for the, I don't know. I figured I'd bring up the conversation, see if we want to. Approach that in some way.
I mean, I'll say personally, I went to the library's annual meeting and I had a, had a babysitter and it was fabulous. Uh, so I, I I personally very much appreciated it. I know, I know Hannah doesn't come because she can't. I assume Kate's the same. I assume the real kids in similar situation.
Yeah.
Where would you, what would we do for the space?
Right.
Let's say we could hire it, right? It's not cost prohibitive. Look, I mean, there's the conference rooms.
Yeah, for for a small amount, it's the conference room. You could probably do up to. Let's the kids in there, it gets zooish, but. I don't know.
I can't imagine that the turnout is gonna be events, right? Open all the doors on the fire trucks. I I don't understand.
I'm just flying in here. Run the sirens.
Yeah. Open a hydrant. Um, the conference, the conference spaces, you know, we can move all of those, those tables. That's a fairly large room.
Yeah, I mean, that's where like, I think we've done that. I think I've seen like the UDC.
Yeah, UDC has done that.
During caucuses or whatever all else in the bastions and, I mean, you're right, the reality is. We're probably talking like six or eight kids max, max.
And so if you were going to hire it out, do you think it would be not viable to have the kids here and the parents there?
As a parent, I would be uncomfortable with.
You would.
I'm sure a lot of it depends on the age of the kid, but yeah, my three year old, I think would be. That'd be tough to drop them with a new person and then.
Will your three year old stay in that room? Are they gonna shuffle in and out and do we care about them?
If they don't, I'll be right there. It's the laughter that really gets.
That's just my soul.
I got a, I got a bit of an idea. Me, me. Me ask the question.
Okay.
Is it possible to have like one person that is like? Certified to watch children and then have student volunteered to handle the amount. Of children. I could potentially see maybe having like. So kids from the high school, like a certain class, class of twenty twenty five. Come watch and then people donate funds for their class in order to. Watch their children. I mean, I would say. But seniors.
Yeah.
Seriously.
Yeah, let me ask that question, see what the liability is. The provider. At least that way. Okay, um.
Also just, I wanna add that your March first is when your taxable status deadline exemption request is March first. They start the assessment and then they publish it on May first. The county is their tax cycle. So you want to have numbers on March first.
Yeah, we got our preliminary assistance earlier.
The assessor completes and certifies the role with the proposed assessed value on May first.
Certification.
On March first, the ownership and physical condition is assessed. All applications must be filed prior to this date. So I don't know if they roll out something preliminary, doesn't say.
Web host.
Yeah, web hosted. Alright, so, um. There is a document in the Dropbox slash in the agenda packet. Just to start with a little history, uh, twenty twenty, we want to look for new website hosting. Um, and at the time I talked to a couple of different companies around. How that might look and at the end of the day, we ended up going with FLEX software, which is out of Canandaigua. And we've been with them since then, uh, in those four years intervening, um. Everything's more expensive. Welcome to twenty twenty four. Um, they have as of yet not raised our rates, even though a new customer coming in. For our level of support and service would be at four hundred, like three ninety nine, four hundred a month versus the two hundred a month that we're at currently. Um. Not only of cost increases, but uh, accessibility, so the ability for the website to work for people who need screen readers or high contrast visualizations. Or whatever all else is steadily increasing, those requirements are increasing, especially for municipalities ADA. Rules and and effectively that, but in the digital space, and they've been actually. On the vanguard of pushing that, we've actually did a contract with them and a provider to assess the website. They really. Ensuring that they're maintaining kind of the requirements that we need. Um, but all of that leads up to them actually building a different new generation of platform for our hosting that's. Makes that a lot easier, also is more customizable and they can do a bunch more things on there. They would like to, they're sunsetting the platform that we're on. They would like to help us move over to their new platform. Typically, that would be a two to three thousand dollar sort of upfront fee to do that design and migration. Um, which they're willing to waive, but all this leads up to them asking, meaning us to move up to that. Four hundred dollars a month price plan, which we would have already been if we were a new customer, but kind of finally setting us up at that price point. Um, obviously, so the the kind of the question has come to us, do we want to go that path? Or do we want to go look at reevaluating our options at this point? Um, and and so that's kind of where the conversation is. I did put a a table there. Up at the top of the pricing that we got four years ago, who knows how representative that is. Um, my takeaways from that though is that. Uh, for most of them, you know, the amount of cost that we're talking about, additional cost with this new price increase. Would be in the same neighborhood as what it would cost to move over to any of these. Um, and that's, that's that fee and pricing that they're willing to waive for us. Um, so I'll just say. Personally, I feel like I find myself leaning towards staying with them. We've had great success so far. Their support is wonderful. They're a local business. Uh, I do appreciate kind of supporting that direction. Um, and and they're they're smaller and personal. I mean, I think that that there goes. It's hard to kind of over undersell that. Um, you know, these other companies are. Purpose built for municipalities, which probably has some benefits, but are just big companies that go around and. Stand up a website for everybody. It looks like everybody else is, they wouldn't be able to do in my estimation, a lot of the stuff that like Joel has done a lot of customization. We've done some things with like updating, uploading forms that. Um, that Tom has asked for, so there's a lot that they can do and they can do even more of that kind of custom design and functionality work on this new platform, so. My suggestion would be to kind of stick with, even though that will increase the the price a bit. Um, but I think we'll be in a better place. I saw an early. Version of the website that they're moving another municipality to, I want to say the town of Hopewell, maybe.
Yeah.
Um, and it looks really nice and it looks quite a bit nicer than what we have currently. There's. A lot of the pages that we have right now are basically just a wall of text. You can do some formatting, some bolding and sizing, whatnot, but it's kind of all a text. You can't get little things like this feels like a little section here, this feels like a section there, kind of ported off more visually. Desirable, um, and they're able to do that while maintaining that kind of, we can go in and edit what it actually says and kind of. Updated day to day, week to week, um, in a way that I think looks quite, kind of a bit nicer, so. Anyway, as a long spiel to say, I'm, I'm interested in continuing with, but I want to bring it to the board and see. If people walk at that number, have other questions or concerns or where we want to take this.
Comments, thoughts?
No, I agree. I think it would cost just as much to move over to a different platform in there. I think it, I agree with you. I think giving it consistency is nice.
Yeah.
Like you said, working with a smaller company that's. Um, that's a little bit more user friendly, somebody you can pick up the phone and talk to.
Yeah. A a lot of, you know, customized.
Customized.
I think a lot of these other, you're in their system and it looks exactly like it was. You can choose your colors and put your logo, that's kind of the extent of it.
Okay. You know. Seems like six and a half a dozen of another, honestly, um. I do resent a little bit the subscription model being applied to municipalities, but I guess like that's just the nature of the game.
Welcome to software.
Yeah.
And I will say as the primary user of the website, it's awesome. They're great. It's a great product, such it's gonna be improved, that's even better. And definitely more friendly than other website products they used in past lives.
Yeah, I was just recognizing someone else maybe this morning.
Yeah, they're great.
You should go check them out.
And they respond like within the half an hour, typically, not sooner.
Yeah, I have the. Last four years. I think if anything, I look at it as they learned it.
Yeah, that carries value, yeah.
Yeah. Alright, well, I can pass along that that's the direction we'll move and figure out what next steps are. Um, my understanding was just based on their backlog, they'll probably look at moving over. February, March timeframes, we've got a little bit of time still and then they'll work on moving things over, probably work with.
Every March.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was, it was their timeline.
That's great.
Okay, good. Um, yeah, probably work with with you in in your office the most on that.
Okay.
Um, but we can figure out what that looks like.
If there's a training session on road Joel and tubes.
Yeah, that's a good point. And I think, and you know, the other things, you know, as we're, as they're doing this right over is changeover. They'll be rewriting a lot of parts of it, so we have, we can think about it in the interim time, but there's. Things we want to change if this is we're not enjoying, you know, that sort of stuff is good to bring in. It's a good moment to bring that up.
Yeah.
Energy management?
Yes, let me, uh. So this is a conversation, there is more content down the Dropbox under eight D and its various subparts. Uh, this is a, let's see, where do I want to start with this? Maybe I'll just start kind of linearly how we got here, MRB. Uh, we have kind of orderly-ish check-ins on all the various projects that they've got going and one of the things they brought to our attention last time we talked. Is a group that they work with that focuses on. Uh, community solar and savings that you can get through that for our energy needs. Um, and so I've started having a conversation with that group. Um, and there's kind of two forks of it now. One is talking about community solar, so we could talk through that and see if we're interested in pursuing some of that. Um, in the process of pulling all of the information together to see what pricing would be like and what our need is and that sort of thing. They've also noticed that we had at one point had an energy contract. Um, that expired the beginning of this year, uh, for like a fixed rate or some sort of like structured rate of energy. And now we're just kind of floating on the rate, whatever the in the market does. Um, that is another service that they provide where we could work with them to lock in another rate structure. Going forward and they did recommend that we look at that, that just kind of going on the floating price is not hugely advantageous. Um, and so that's the second part that we can also talk about, but I will start first with the community solar. I think the kind of takeaway. Let's let me. A little more structured at first. So community solar, that's basically solar fields that you see out and about when you're driving around, out in fields, that sort of a thing. These larger solar installations, um, and New York State subsidizes those quite a bit. And then as a energy buyer, you get a standard discount of some percentage. Off your electric, your, your energy costs. Um, so they have run the numbers for us. Um, and you can do this for your house, you can do this for the village, you can do it kind of wherever. I've, I've done it for my house. And usually for houses for mass market, you see about a ten percent savings on your energy costs. Um. They took a look at municipal, our municipal demand, and so what's interesting when you think about the difference of a house versus a municipality. Or say this building very much like a house. Or say, you know, the sewer plant, huge draw, much higher demand. Um, at that point, you're called an anchor account, but you have to be kind of dealt with and managed separately because of the amount, the large volume that you draw. And possibly the spikes and kind of immediacy that you'll draw as a pump kicks on or whatever it might be. Um, so they look at separating those two out as kind of two different chunks of energy demand that we have. And then getting contracts for both sides of those. Um, the reason being is you get that ten percent benefit. For the mass market for the the houses and you get a a lower about like a five percent benefit, but still a benefit for the larger draw. Um, so what they've done is they've gone ahead and kind of packaged this all up and then they work with, they're kind of. They work with a field of suppliers who effectively are paying them to go find. Buyers for their energy. And so we, we, it doesn't come with a cost to us. They're kind of the middle maker and they're making a money through. Through the the providers of energy. They have for us a couple of different options we can look into. Uh, if we want to go down this path of signing up for the solar and and then the the savings on top of it. Um, basically, the biggest difference is just your length of term, so we can sign for three, five. Or really kind of any number of years up to twenty, after that, there's a ten there. One of the providers apparently seems very open of five, ten, fifteen, twenty, kind of whatever we want to build out. So we can kind of decide how long we'd like to lock in or not. There's benefits, pros and cons to both of being locked in and. Just like any, you're locked in. Things, you know, you're kind of betting what's gonna change over time. Um, I think if I were to guess, their sense is. It's more likely to see some of these subsidies dry up and fade out over time as we just see more and more moving to solar and so. Possibly locking in longer upfront is a benefit, but there's always a risk, you know, how much we want to kind of take on and lock ourselves into. What if the next new shiny thing comes on, are the same. Uh, but there's the the first document there talks through our different options. There's kind of two ways I was mentioning of splitting out the cost. Um. We could either just do one big discounted five percent and put all of our energy in it, or we can split it out into that. You that like smaller and larger energy and get the better rates on the smaller, which I would suggest we do. I don't see why. We'd kind of go the other way, but. Rates on the smaller, which I would suggest we do, I don't see why we'd kind of go the other way, but they put it out there as an offering. Their estimate, based on the numbers that they've run, is around four thousand dollars a year in savings, which is not a ton, but it's not nothing. Um, and seems kind of worth it to at least pursue. Um, and then we can talk about, you know, if we're interested in that, we can talk about what what term of years, there's different providers with different years, three, five and ten and so forth down there, so. I've talked quite a bit, I will kind of open it up to conversations generally about. Community solar generally going down this path, if we're interested. So on and so forth.
Questions or comments?
Um, so one thing that's worth noting is the county does this. Um, so it would be worth talking with Terry Carroll.
Okay.
Um, they, I believe, use Sunpower as the firm. Forget, I'm I'm drawing from a couple of months ago when I was looking into similar thing, but.
That is the energy provider or kind of the.
So that's what I was wondering, if that's like an intermediary, I think that is the ultimate provider who they contract with directly. There's some convoluted form of auctioning that happens where you do this and evidently they go out and they. Figure it out and everyone does their best and it's always the same provider that comes up every single year. So he recommended just going with them and contracting with them directly. Uh, what's that from that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to reach out to Terry and see. What do you think, so that I don't think we're really NDA or anything that I'm aware of to like. Not talk about this, so I'm I'm happy to see what his perspective is.
I'll leave the analysis up to you young kids, because I understand this about as much as I understand Bitcoin, so.
I mean, that is kind of what he, at the end of what he says, like, you know, some people come at this from the energy side, some people come from the discount side, some people come from like green side, or he's like.
But it doesn't prohibit you from taking other actions to then.
Yeah, I think there's.
Further discount.
He'd mentioned something about, you know, if we already had our own onsite solar, if we ever wanted to build something like that, I think there are. That's, I think, maybe a little bit where the terms come in, you know, if you're gonna lock yourself in for twenty years, who knows what we might want to build in house, maybe, who knows, question marks. Down the road. So I don't think.
So that's a separate, I'm trying.
That is a separate thing.
I'm not explaining this well because it doesn't make sense fundamentally, but when you buy into community solar, you're not actually buying there's. Energy directly. Is my understanding. But you can, Delaware Solar is the only company that I'm remembering, but basically you can buy offsets, green offsets through NICEG. Right, and that's a discount, so I think what I'm, I think you can do both of those at the same time, so you can offset and get credits for your. Energy consumption specifically, and then you can also buy into a community solar platform. And the. The discount. Is in the Delaware solar version, that model is actually a discount. The community solar isn't technically a discount, it's it's, they're applied at different places.
I think there's, the way I do it, at least in my house, is I have a provider who's like the base provider. And they're in charge of making sure there's enough energy on the grid in my house, and then there's solar and they can offset during the summer months particularly. But maybe not during the winter, so that's where. That base provider. Is always there, but I can kind of mix and match with some solar as well, so you can add kind of two things together at the same time, at least. At a, at a house level.
I will. I haven't looked into this in a couple of months and I feel like I'm not explaining it very well, so I'll I'll look into it again and. But it is, it's a, it's a. Add-on positive, right? I know, it doesn't detract at all from the idea of community solar, yeah, which I think is fabulous.
If there is interest in this, do, is, and this is a. Picking numbers out of the air, but do we have a sense of how long of an agreement we'd like to go with? I I found myself coming out. Of the conversation. Leaning towards the five year. I. Should have taken better notes, my sense was that. Oh, man, I should have taken better notes, I came away thinking the five year felt like a good middle round, um. And I, now I can't give you stronger reason. By that, other than that's what I came away from the conversation with. But if there's other thoughts of. Free, let's keep it short and not worry about it, or let's go long and. Lock in for ten or more, um. That will be good to hear, otherwise I can kind of. Start having a contract or something brought up that we can look at in the next meeting.
I would go for shorter term, simply because the advancement in technology, we don't even know what we're gonna be, you know? Things might be a whole lot different in another. Ten years, so I agree with you to go the fi, you know, the most to go five.
Yeah, I agree, I think ten, ten would be maybe the extreme that I'd be interested in, but even that starts feeling a little weird.
Yeah, that's a little. It's a long time, especially with the way things are going.
It feels short because. Especially if the subsidies are state-based. You can see a lot of changes in the next three years to those subsidies, depending on what the budget normal, it's like, yeah. But tends to long, so five is a nice.
Yeah. Alright. Well, I'm I'm hearing from this that I can go back and start working on a a five-year term for the the four thousand dollar issue. Savings and uh. See where that takes us.
That sounds good. Any other thoughts, comments on that?
I would touch base with Terry quickly.
Yes, I'll do that first. I've got that note, um. Uh, so then before we go off completely off the topic, that other last part that I mentioned where. We apparently had a contract for more of a stable energy rate that has then. Expired earlier in the year and they pointed out to us. If we'd like them to go draw up some. Similar numbers of like what it would look like for us to get. Back on a stable and and who that might be with, you know, kind of be our agent on that front to kind of go and. Sort that part of the puzzle out. Um, there is a a letter of authorization that's in the Dropbox, um. Which is basically listing them as our. Energy consultant of record. And then saying that they can go talk to. The requisite. Places and to pull information about. Our current energy use and and so on and so forth, so they can start pulling those numbers together, so. If that sounds interesting, I don't really see that there's any downside there. Uh, I would move that we authorize Rorden to sign a letter of authorization.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
We're just saying that they can pull the information and get the information for us, correct?
Yeah, that they can pull the information and talk to energy suppliers on our behalf and and that sort of a thing, so they can. Put together, we're not required to. Go with anything, we're not obligated to. Move forward in any way, this is just giving the. Access to the right places and data so that they can pull something together for us.
Means Jess doesn't have to pull every bill in the world to the next.
Right. Yeah, and though I think they're gonna look at, they could look at both. Gas and electricity with this as well, so they. Yeah, we'll see if they need anything else from Jess, but it seemed like it was all too heavy for the couple of things that they.
They already looked at stuff.
They might need a little bit more for gas or may, I don't know if this might give them enough just to pull it themselves, see.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have a motion, the second to authorize me to sign this letter of authorization, which will name our management company LLC. As our exclusive energy consultant of records or any other. Comments or questions? Here, you know, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Maybe also need energy for.
That's it.
Do we have any other items of new business? Anyone here from the public would like to comment on it? I would then entertain a motion, go into executive session and discuss the EMS personnel matter, so, second. All in favor?